...segment of the Monroe County Democratic Party's Candidate Forum where we'll be talking to our Monroe County Council candidates, Council at-large candidates. We'll start out with five-minute statements from each candidate, followed by a Q and A period where we will be taking questions from the audience. If anybody in the audience would like to pose a question, we have index cards here. We'll take those and collect those throughout the session. We encourage you to put forward your questions while we're in progress. After the Q and A period, we will have two-minute closing statements from each candidate. And without further ado, we'll go ahead and start with our five-minute opening statements with candidate Jeff Carson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Carson, and I'm a candidate for city, I mean, excuse me, the County Council at-large. I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity of being here and sharing my passion and my desire to become a county council member. I think to be on a good panel as these veterans here, like I said, I'm new to the community, but compared to their years, they've been here ten, twenty years. I've been here five years. I work for a local cook company. I'm married to my wife Tammy Swinney-Carson. She's a adjunct professor at Ivy Tech. We have nine children. Six, I had five previously. We have one together, and then she had three. Also, I'm a foster parent within the Monroe County system. I was also with the villages before I moved to Monroe County. And I've always had a desire to serve, to be a servant leader for whatever community, whatever area I'm in. I'm very active in my local church. I'm also active in whatever programs I'm in. So I have a desire to be a, age did have changed. I want to listen to what the people have to say. I just don't want to be a face. I don't want to just be a name. We get caught up with names, you know what I'm saying? And the people, the people who work hard, the people who, in this community, are concerned about it, that's what I'm concerned about. So I would like to just have an opportunity to serve with some of these individuals who will be electors also with me, to make Monroe County a better place to live. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next statement from Jeff McKim.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff McKim, and I'm asking for your vote to serve another term on the Monroe County Council. I've lived in the county for about twenty-five years. My wife, Amy Cornell, and I together have a fourteen-year-old son, Grayson, and a two-year-old daughter, Tessa, both of whom are somewhere in the rumor building right now. I've been serving on the county council since 2009. I'm currently serving as its president, and I've also served as president in 2010. I served on the Solid Waste Management District Board for three years, and I'm also serving on the Convention and Visitors Commission for the past two years. We've had an eventful four years on the council. The recession and legislative meddling from the state have taken their toll on local governments, but we've risen to the challenge, and I have a proven record of delivering results. Some of the accomplishments on the council that I'm most proud of include creating a stormwater management program to keep our water clean, supporting the county health clinic that helped keep healthcare costs low, constrained, provide better care for employees, and has led to an unprecedented surplus in the healthcare reserve fund, creating the juvenile services fund and expanding the services provided at the youth shelter, base funding the victim offender reconciliation program, introducing the equipment lease to start up the new downtown recycling center, spearheading the council deliberations on the successful purchase of the showers building, working to ensure accountability for tax abatements by negotiating the first binding memorandums of understanding in the county, working with employers to save over one hundred fifty manufacturing jobs in the community, authoring and sponsoring the council resolution supporting vote centers, taking the initiative on the council to support the successful school referendum, successfully cutting the county budget for 2012 by over $100,000 without layoffs, creating agreements between the county and the Solid Waste Management District to combine administrative functions and save the taxpayers' money, providing funding for the Futures Family Planning Clinic for the purchase of contraceptives for low-income clients, advocating for the hiring of a grants administrator, bringing in more than $500,000 to Monroe County in 2011, and leading us to be the first county government in Indiana to be using solar energy to power a government building, bringing a much-needed cost of living increase to hard-working county employees, the only cost of living increase in over three years. I also have an aggressive legislative agenda in the upcoming months that I hope we get to talk about later in the forum. That includes increasing funding for residents with developmental disabilities, supporting a program that's proven to increase high school graduation rates and reduce the involvement of our youth in the juvenile justice system, and reducing the health insurance fringe rate, and of course balancing the budget, not by 2014, as I had originally hoped, but right now, in 2012. In the years ahead, it's critical that you have experienced progressive Democratic leaders on the council representing your priorities and values. I am one of those leaders, and I'm asking for your vote in the Democratic primary. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKim.
You know, this is democracy in action. It's a very curious building, a very curious business. And I'm reminded of what Winston Churchill said, or as Spolletta said, is that democracy is the worst form of government except all others. But so it's a very curious business, and I'm anxious to be part of it, and I'm asking for your vote to be re-elected to the county council. It's not going to be easy for me this year. This is my last race, and it looked like it's going to be my most difficult, not in the general, but in the primary, because we have, as you can see, a formidable bunch of candidates. We have two strong, kick-ass women. We have a good-looking, smart black man, and we've got a couple of, two or three experienced white guys. But as I said yesterday in the Democratic Women's Club, is that they all have one serious handicap, except me, of course. They all have a serious handicap of being middle-aged. So what you need on the council, what you need on the council is a wise old head who's willing to do what has to be done, knows what to do, and knows what the deal is, and has enough guts and courage to do the right thing. In the next four years, everything else on the county council is going to be subservient to us balancing our budget. For the last few years, I'm proud of being on the council the last eight years, because I've been around the county government now for forty years. And this bunch of people who's on the county council now, and was on the prior council, Sophia, was really terrific people as a rule. I didn't always agree with them, but I was impressed by their quality. So the big problem we're going to have in the next four years is to balance our budget, because we have been spending about $2 million, between five and 10%, more than we're taking in. Now, as people mentioned, we never know from the state, and I consider the state government basically incompetent, so we never know exactly what we're going to get. But what's clear is that we are spending more money than we're taking in, and despite the fact that we went into the recession four years ago, or six years ago, or eight years ago, whatever it was, in very good shape with a lot of reserves, that will not last forever. So the big, big deal we have, and the big thing is going to be subservient to us balancing our budget. There's a lot of things I'd like to work on, and of course, one of them is, is the, our criminal justice system and our probation department. You know, it's a shame, you know, one of the shame, you know, in the shame of America in the eighteenth century, nineteenth century, was slavery. The shame of America in the twentieth century was segregation. And the shame of our country today is our criminal justice system. We have, what, 2%, 3% of people in this country in jail are in the criminal justice system. So we need to do, to work on that. And so I'm, as hard as we are to find the money that needs to be done, I'll do my best to find the money to finance the particular probation and the criminal justice system to do what we can to reduce recidivism, to reduce subsistence abuse, and to do all those things that might make things a little bit more, a little bit more of the American dream for the American people. But there are other things, which I'll, maybe I'll get a chance to mention others that I want to work on, but to balance the budget's a big deal. Oh, but in case I forget, I wanted to remind you that when you're making a pitch, you always ask for the voter's vote. So I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Henninger. Julie Thomas.
I'd first like to start by thanking the Democratic Party, Monroe County, and the officers, and also CATS for filming today. My name is Julie Thomas, and I'm seeking reelection to an at-large seat in Monroe County Council. I have demonstrated my commitment to Monroe County as a resident and as an elected official on the county council in protecting our environment and encouraging civic engagement. I have a proven record protecting Monroe County's environment. As a county plan commissioner since 2009, and as a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee, I have endeavored to protect our valuable natural resources. I help create a Monroe County Environmental Commission, it's Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission, and I continue to serve on the Fleet Finance Subcommittee, where I've encouraged reduced fuel usage and helped work for the introduction of alternative fuel vehicles. I currently serve on the Community Energy Challenge Committee, which led to the installation of the solar panels on the roof of the showers building. And I believe that harnessing the power of alternative energy sources holds great promise to support a fiscally efficient county government in the future. I will also continue to encourage civic engagement. In addition to helping create the Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission, I helped form the Women's Commission, the first county commission of its kind in the state of Indiana. As a counselor, I helped establish a consistent process, including an application and interview, for all council appointments to boards and commissions. I did this to encourage residents to share their talent and wisdom on county boards and commissions. I continue to co-host monthly residence breakfast meetings with City Councilor Dorothy Granger. Together, we bring city-county leaders together to discuss new initiatives and to share ideas. And I have demonstrated my commitment to the community through my continued service as an active volunteer at Middleway House and at Planned Parenthood. Because we all have a vested interest in the county's welfare and improvement, I will continue to encourage residents to join our boards and commissions, and I will do all that I can to ensure that Monroe County government is accessible, approachable, and responsive to the needs of its residents. As a fiscal body of county government, the county council is responsible for setting the budget. County revenues continue to decline, as we've heard, while costs, especially personnel costs, continue to increase. In order to prevent widespread employee layoffs and severe cuts in government services, we need to restructure county government in an effective manner. Gathering and incorporating the input of the county's professional staff and the elected and appointed department heads is the best way to accomplish this goal. I will work to foster an inclusive and organic process to ensure the continued delivery of efficient government services within a budget we can afford. I'm Julie Thomas, Democratic candidate for Monroe County Council, and as a member of a council and in my service to the community, I've demonstrated my commitment to Monroe County. I'd appreciate your vote on May eighth. My website is JulieThomas.us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Sophia Travis.
Thank you so much to the Monroe County Democratic Party for hosting this. My name is Sophia Travis, and I'm seeking election to the Monroe County Council. I've resided in Monroe County for twenty-eight years, and I dearly love this place. When I served as a county council at-large member from 2005 to 2009, I established a record demonstrating an ability to listen, learn, and to create fair and transparent government. I've proven that I'm both an effective leader and an ensemble member. The pillars of my public service are fairness and transparency in government. By seeking that citizens are served and treated fairly, my work has led to things like the establishment of the all-accessible carst farm park playscape and splash pad, the creation of the Futures Family Planning Clinic when we were in jeopardy of losing Title X funding in Monroe County, and I've supported victims assistance programs in our justice system. Those are but just a few examples. I remain involved with public services related to local government by serving on boards and commissions, and in this way, I see how public budget priorities support community needs and values. By prioritizing transparency in government, my leadership ensured that all sessions of the county council were conducted with thorough involvement of all the people who would be affected by the council's decisions. I believe that ensuring transparency in government needs vigilant attention to remain a priority. When elected, I can effectively and compassionately voice that concern and demand adherence to policies that safeguard transparency in government. My fresh ideas for raising awareness about how our daily lives are affected by county government are abundant. For example, we must establish user-friendly resources detailing how council members shape policy. In city government, there is something called a Legislative Index that is user-friendly and allows the public to see that process. Taxpayers need an annual report about the county budget, something that is just practical and accessible to the voters and the taxpayers. My fresh ideas about how to create more transparency in government are evident in my record of service, particularly while serving on the county council. I actually authored and drafted the language for resolutions, like the Fuel Conservation Resolution, the resolution that established the Employee Advisory Board, a resolution that established a public process that's more transparent in order to disperse community services funding to not-for-profits in our, in our community. I'd also like to take this moment to acknowledge the Democratic Women's Caucus and Democracy for Monroe County, two progressive organizations in our community that foster increased awareness about what it means to be a progressive Democrat. And I don't just wear that label. I live being a progressive Democrat, and I deeply appreciate the support and endorsement of those two hard-working organizations. One which helps elect women to office and to increase equity in representation of women, and Democracy for Monroe County, which champions progressive ideals. And in that, in that spirit, I'd like to add that my former work as a Monroe County Plan Commissioner also supports my record on environmental issues and my care about that. My entry into local politics arose when people heard me speak at an I-69 rally where we voiced our concern in opposition to this, to the New Terrain Highway. And that is going to impact our environment a great deal, and I think that my conviction that that is a thing that is wrong, that does not reflect Democratic values, is something that is still at the heart of my activism and my identity as a progressive Democrat. And I'd so appreciate your vote on May eighth. And if you're early voting, please vote for Sophia Travis for County Council at Large. If you need any more information, you can visit www.sophia-travisforcouncil.com. I'm Sophia Travis for County Council at Large.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. Scott Wells.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Wells. I'm a candidate for county council. My campaign theme is fiscal sustainability through transparency, real transparency. And my motto is, "It's the mission, not the commission." What that really means is, not everything is all about just how much money you get paid, it's about what you do for people, being a public servant, trying to help people learn to help themselves. That's what I'm all about. And I like to talk about how I got to where I am now, at 58 years old. I got educated at this great university here, Indiana University, and I came here in 1973 and earned a chemistry/biology two degrees. 1978, I was going to be a drill, fill-in-bill man. I was going to be a dentist. And I really was good. I got through my freshman year, and I started getting into heavy patient work. I'll never forget this one patient, this woman said, "You know, you really like to explain things. You seem like you ought to be a teacher." And then I thought about that, and actually, I took yearly absence and thought about it and actually decided I'm going to go by and get my teaching license. So I got a master's in education and a sports medicine master's, and became a teacher and a coach for sixteen years, as really a public servant, trying to help people learn to help themselves. And right now, I'm presently doing the same kind of work, only I work with geriatric patients. I am a home care specialist. And if you want to see what's wrong with healthcare, these four antibiotics are called Venkusen. It's a last-resort antibiotic. Each pill's $250. How many people can afford that? Probably not hardly any of us. That's the congressional debate. We're not talking about that today, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. That's the problem with our healthcare. We need to get that fixed. Also, I own my own business, Environmental Enterprise, do a lot of landscaping work, plant trees that take away the CO2 and bring us the oxygen by which we can breathe. And I got into the policy issues of the environment way back when I was a young kid. I used to, actually, when I, born and raised in Indianapolis, used to, in my canoe on Geis Reservoir, I'd pick up all the trash and everything. I wrote a couple of letters to the editor. They came out, took pictures of all the garbage I picked up in my canoe. I got into working for the Hoosier Environmental Council. I got involved in trying to protect Lake Monroe and was one of the key people that got spearheaded the ordinance by which we have the strictest watershed in the state of Indiana with the four different areas of slope restriction and housing density in the overlays. The HECC or the Hoosier Environmental Council awarded me the award, frontline award that year, and I worked three years as an elected official for them. Also, before I got on the council, I helped write the cell tower ordinance with several other people in the room here, and I appreciate doing that. We have the most restrictive cell tower ordinance in the state of Indiana. When I got on the county council in 2000, there's three things I would like to talk about what I got achieved, and it was all through open transparency. I helped remove the master mirror loophole, and developers started having to pay the real cost of hook-on fees for the infrastructure involved, saving the ratepayers in the CBU, hundreds of thousands of dollars, protecting our water supply as well. Improvement in location permit, our planning department never had any way to raise a penny. And that budget of $327,000, when I worked on that budget, this brought in at least $50,000 a year, every year. So it was just a way to offset the debt problem. Also, for CATS, I worked with Michael White, and at that time, we were supposed to get 5% of the franchise fee agreement. That was an agreement that the cable industry was supposed to pay us. Well, the Columbia Head End was only paying us 3%. So after we worked on that, the commissioners in 2003 finally got that enacted. We're getting over $50,000 to $70,000 a year, every year from that increase from the 3% to the 5%. I'm running because of the budget problems. You cannot run a county or your house when you have three years in a row of deficits. Let's review what those deficits are. In 2010, about a half million dollars. 2011, two and a half million dollars. This year, 2012, it's two and a half million to three million. And of course, it's, that's the problem, it's hard to get the real number, but it's anywhere from between two and a half to $3 million. And so in three years, we're $5.5 to $6 million in the red. And you cannot run your house that way, you can't run a government that way. So I'm trying to get fiscal sustainability through transparency, real transparency. My name is Scott Wells, and I'm running for county council. Thank you, and I'd like to return.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, and thank you, candidates, for your introductory statements. I want to remind the audience that we'd be happy to accept questions, and if you would like a card, please raise your hand. If you'd like to turn in a card with a question, please raise your hand as well. Thank you. Our first, our first question, and we'll start with Mr. McKim. What criteria do you think is appropriate for determining whether businesses receive tax, tax abatements to build or expand in Monroe County?
Good question. The tax abatement is, is one of those tools that is perennially controversial, and I think we've already taken some steps to hopefully make it a little bit less controversial. But I think, I certainly think the primary criterion ought to be, does it actually increase the wages of Monroe County residents? We're not, it's not about number of jobs total, it's certainly not about increasing assessed value, it's about increasing the wages and therefore the well-being of residents who live in the county. I think there are also some other criteria that ought to be used. I think green building ought to be one of the criteria. And then also, I think that businesses ought to be heavily incentivized to invest in brownfields. So I'm proposing that we preemptively designate all brownfields in Monroe County as economic revitalization areas, which essentially is the first step in granting a tax abatement and makes it much more attractive and says, "We want you to build here in these brownfields." Thank you.
Mr. Henninger.
Let's be clear about abatement. All of us have questions, and all of us would like to have criteria for, for businesses to meet, but, you know, any, any business that, that pays a decent wage, to come back to the justice point there, they are going to be approved for abatement. So that's just the way it is. It's, I don't like the idea. I didn't like it when it came up by the 1980s, but it's become part of our system, and we are going, in almost every case, to approve the abatements.
Ms. Thomas.
In general, I do support abatements when they do occur on brownfields. Brownfields are those where a building has been demolished or a building has been vacated. So a building has already occurred, there's infrastructure, there's roadway, there's parking lots, there's driveways. I, I do support abatements that do center on brownfields. I voted against a print pack abatement because it was going to be on a greenfield. It took out basically some great farmland on the, on the far west side of the area. So I was opposed to that for that reason, because we still have plenty of brownfields to develop. It's about jobs, it's about benefits, it's about environmental quality, and we do have a lot of questions to ask, and we're responsible for doing that. Thank you.
Ms. Travis.
Some people would say that tax abatements are an incentive that's all about the race to the bottom, and I tend to agree with that. It's a very difficult process, but to summarize what a tax abatement is, it's forgiving a company its property taxes, and it's, it's not free. The, the property taxes are made up by the average taxpayer who bears that expense. So I think that that message always needs to be made very clear during any abatement And the other aspect of tax abatements is, we could, we could, as a county council, decide that we give, we give tax abatements for other reasons. For example, I was involved with the establishment of our current Monroe County Women's Commission. We could look at if a company gives working families good benefits, and, and we have discussed that in the past.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you. Tax abatements. When I was on the council, Mark Stoops and myself rarely voted for tax abatements. But now with the people's money strings being tighter and tighter, we really got to watch what we're doing here. The way the tax abatements work, it's a ten-year deal. The first year, the business doesn't pay any tax, but guess who makes up the difference? You do. It's passed on to everybody else, and, because the levy has to be brought in anyway. You still can't change that, but you just bring the rate up to offset that. So that means the people pay. The other thing is, I'm for like Julie and Sophia. It's about brownfield development. If, if they can show that they're going to bring in true living wage jobs with insurance benefits, I say tax abatement in a brownfield area, yes, but not in a greenfield area. So I, those are very clear to me decisions, because I don't want to see anyone's taxes going up if I have to. Thank you.
Mr. Carson.
I believe in abatements are very helpful in a sense, but also I would be very skeptical of companies that are not solid in their business dealings, that are, have not been around too long. I'm from Vigo County, and we've had several companies come in before and get the abatement, and then two or three years later, they move, they up and move. And I don't think it's fair for the residents of Monroe County, or of my previous community, Vigo County, for the individuals to be taxed with, the residents to be taxed with a burden from a company. But in a sense of my colleagues, yes, if it's going to benefit from jobs, incentives for companies that may be already here to expand, and for family growth, I'm all for that. So I would support the base, as long as you, it was investigative and to seeing how well that company will be stabilized within the Monroe County.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience. Do you support or oppose I-69 coming through Monroe County, and how would you plan to deal with this issue if you're re-elected or elected? And this goes to Mr. Henninger to start.
It's definitely making a difference, Rick, whether I oppose it or don't oppose it coming through. And that's the reality we have to face, and we need to cooperate with whoever we can to make sure that some of our severe, serious problems that we have facing us with that huge highway coming through to, to get them solved in the best way possible. You know, when I selected Monroe, I didn't select, my wife and I selected Monroe County as a place to live, we were looking for a place that would suit us. It was almost sixty years ago. And one of the things we liked about Monroe County was that it didn't have a major highway through it. Even back in those days, major highways meant light pollution, noise pollution, and ugliness, and that's not changed. But what has changed is, is the world. Now, for example, the highway, when we came here, and for a number of years afterwards, Highway 37 was, was two-lane, and it was called a killer highway. Anyway, we have to, we have to deal with I-69. It's here, it's going to be here. Let's do- Let's do the best we can.
Ms. Thomas.
I worked for a number of years on this issue as a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee. The Indiana Department of Transportation has a record, especially with this highway, of promising underpasses and overpasses and then cutting corners. By not constructing those overpasses and underpasses, they're going to cut their dollars that they spend, but they leave us, county government, with a huge problem. So we have to spend tax dollars not on patching roads, but instead working on county roads to re-shift that traffic pattern that will happen. The air quality studies Indot gave us were based on old data. If we go out of compliance of air quality in this county, we are all going to pay the price, and it is a steep price. The fragile cars features in southwestern Monroe County are in danger of being irrevocably damaged during the construction of the highway. That's a water quality issue. And there are many more things, but mostly the fact that they're dumping traffic on a 37. Section 5 has not had any funding identified yet, and as far as we know, all of that traffic will sit on 37. We will have the light, the noise, and worse, the air pollution to deal with.
Ms. Travis.
Well, I've already stated without any shadow of a doubt that I am opposed to I-69. It's a new terrain highway. It will devastate a huge swath of Monroe County. I reside in a portion of the county that will be deeply affected by the construction. I live in Clear Creek Township. Indian Creek Township will be irrevocably ruined by this new terrain highway. If we're talking about the economy and economic development and creating or maintaining Monroe County as the unique and special place that it is, and you care about that issue, then it only stands to reason that you fight this fight and you remain opposed to the building of this highway. I, too, served on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Again, I served on the Plan Commission for three years, and that work demands an elected official who has our point of view being opposed.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you. I'm opposed to I-69 as I was 20 years ago. When I worked with the Hoosier Environmental Council, we had an office down here. I canvassed this area, and almost everybody was against this highway. But why I'm against it now is, they have not identified a funding source. They have no way that they're going to be able to complete this project because they don't have the money, unless something changes drastically. Right now, what I'm really worried about is the safety issue. Right now, if you're on Tapp Road and 37, there's 22,000 average daily trips of vehicles a day there. This highway, they're going to increase 25,000 more. One-third of them are going to be trucks, big trucks, triple-trailer trucks. And that's what I'm worried about. It's the safety issue. And if we don't get that out to the people, I don't think they realize what we're up against here. But I think the thing is, we're talking about people's lives here that are going to be hurt. Thank you.
Mr. Carson.
Yes, I'm also opposed to the I-69 project. Safety is the main fact within any community. And with the, it's called the international highway. It's going to lead all the way from Texas all the way up to Canada, and that's going to increase all types of revenue for not only the people who we lease it out to, because they were talking about leasing it out, but also the farmland that family members have had for so long. It's going to take away from those individuals. And as you do go down south towards Paoli and the other areas, it's just something that really wasn't well planned out within the state. And like I said, it's cost us more money than we anticipated. And now we have to come up with funds to fund other projects, to fund other highway projects. So like I said, it's in the process. It's been there. Like I said, it's been in Vigo County. They're doing the same thing.
Mr. McKim.
Yes. I-69 is a terrible waste of resources. It never should have been built. It is going to be built. So I think the question here was what we should do about it. And at this point, I think the best thing we can do is to work to mitigate its impact. I appreciate the MPO's stance of playing hardball with Indot. I don't think we would have gotten as far as we would, and I don't think we will be able to move forward and get what we need for the community without playing hardball with them. I very much support a balanced infrastructure, one that balances the needs of motorists with pedestrians and cyclists and other alternative transportation users. And this presents an opportunity for us to try to improve the balance of our infrastructure, which right now is so heavily weighted towards cars. State Road 37 is, from the perspective of pedestrians and cyclists, already an interstate. It might as well be an interstate. It's uncrossable. We have some real opportunities here, like I said, by playing hardball with Indot, to get some accommodations, to actually make it so that we can connect county and city alternative transportation networks. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question, and we'll begin with Ms. Thomas. Are there any ways in which you, as a council member, or a would-be council member, believe that you can make an impact on poverty in Monroe County?
That's a great question. We are fortunate to have a community services fund that we use, and we have been, the council has been very strong about keeping that fund even when there's other issues going on with the budget. And we are able, through a committee of council members and residents, to come up with that list of who gets those small, and really, they're small donations, because the need is huge. I've worked in, as a volunteer in social services, for the 20 years I've been in Monroe County. And there is a great need out there, and it has not diminished. So that's one thing. We also need to do everything that we can to encourage businesses to come to Monroe County that are going to pay a living wage, that are going to be focused on a green economy, that will lift everyone out of poverty, hopefully. That's the goal.
Thank you. Ms. Travis.
Well, one example of how county government can address poverty is to lead by example in being a good workplace. And when I was involved with county government through being on the county council previously, it was something that I felt was a cause to champion, to improve county government as a workplace in order that we lead by example. And by doing so, providing better benefits or better conscientiousness about the workplace setting in order to help primary caregivers and to help working mothers, single fathers if they were in the workplace. These are people that definitely struggle with a lower income. Monroe County does not provide the income to well-educated people that can be had in other urban areas. So that's just one example, leading by example.
Thank you. Mr. Wells.
Thank you very much. It's an excellent question. As tough as everything is now, that's one of the most important things we must take care of, is the social services, Planned Parenthood, Middle Way House. Those things cannot be cut, because people's lives and how they interact with people, to me, is more important than buildings. So one of the things we could do to help bring people together is, as many church organizations we have in this community, I think it'd be great if we could bring them all together and have them try to help us with people, not just money. It's people helping people. And I, being raised in a strong Catholic family way back, I remember how the nuns, and they would come to different things and help people. And I know it sounds almost crazy now, but that still can be done. You know, it's people helping people, and it doesn't really cost a lot of money to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Carson.
Yes. It deeply disturbs me within the homeless individuals in this community and the lack of jobs. During my recent going out, meeting people, individuals in the community, I ran into some homeless people yesterday, day before yesterday. I went out into the neighborhood called The Hill. Not familiar with these places, but yet again, I want to get out and see what these peoples are concerned about. And not only them, but people who have jobs, like myself, but also to be impactful, to see what we as individuals can do as servant leaders. I want to be a servant leader. Whatever your need is, whatever I can do to help out, to increase jobs, to try to make an impact in families, it's about families in Monroe County. And that's my main concern, is the homeless, family, the health issues, the stuff that people don't get a chance to talk about, the people, the things that individuals don't get to see. So I like to be hands-on and finding out, how can we keep these programs, Middle Way House, all these other programs, Soup kitchens? Like I said, I've been there, seen it, and done it. And I think I can reculate with the individuals who know, who have burns in their heart. So.
Thank you. Mr. McKim.
Yes, thanks. I'll give two examples. One, I'll echo Ms. Travis's comment about leading by example. As a large employer in the county, Monroe County Government needs to pay its workers a living wage. I'm proud that, under my leadership in 2010, when I served as president, we were able to give the county employees a cost of living increase, the only time we were able to do that since I've been on the council. Next week, I'm going to propose that we use $50,000 of the Juvenile Services Nonreverting Fund that we set up, which currently has a $1.3 million balance that's sitting idle, to rescue the Graduation Coaches Program. It's a program that's been proven to increase high school graduation rates by at-risk kids and reduce the involvement of youth in the juvenile justice system.
Mr. Henninger.
Well, another reason to vote for me is that I'm probably the only person on here that's really been poor. And I mean really poor. My father was killed in 1931, leaving my mother pregnant with five kids with no support. We hustled for the next 10 years, very much like they did in Victorian England, like you read about in Dixon. We lived from day to day. And because of that, I'm very acutely aware of this problem. It's not a problem that we can cure in here in Monroe County. I'm tired to tell you, folks. It's a very serious national problem. It's been here since the word "go." We need to work on it. We need to first recognize that we have a very serious problem in poverty, and this is a very costly one. For example, I mentioned earlier that my main concern on county government, if I had a special interest group, was the criminal justice system. And I would, if you go to the people on probation, people in jail, I would suspect that 75% of those people at least come out of poverty. So this is a very serious question. There's no easy answer. I agree with everybody. But we need to recognize as a society that we have a serious problem here and that we all are just alike and are responsible for each other.
Thank you. Our next question, and we'll start with Ms. Travis. The county's budget is at the core of what the council's responsibilities are all about, and as you know, the budget is currently out of balance. What do you think should be done to bring the budget into balance?
I'm sorry, Rick. I was thinking about my last speech. Would you?
Would you like me to repeat?
Repeat that, please.
Okay.
It's a good speech.
Yes. Well done. The budget, the county's budget, is at the core of what the county council does. It's part of its core responsibility. It's currently out of balance, and then the question is, what would you do to bring it into balance? And this is a question to Ms. Travis.
Well, this has been a perennial issue, and anyone following the news, local and state news, knows that there's a complex spider web of factors that have impacted many local units of government, not just Monroe County, but throughout the state. As a progressive Democrat, I just firmly believe in getting out in front of these issues with a positive attitude. And I think that looking at the issue not from a quantitative point of view, but from a qualitative point of view. Anything that we do to try to alleviate budget issues should be about, how does this improve the quality of services? How does it maintain quality of services? How does it maintain the quality of the workplace experience for the public servants who work throughout county government? I don't believe in cutting people's jobs and essentially firing them during the annual budget session. I think that is a brutal way to approach budget issues, and it's all too often happened. So I believe positivity is the way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Decrease expenses, increase revenues. That's how we can solve the problem. When I look at, I got two examples right here. I look at the city health insurance. I went to the budget, or their work session on February 29th. They're paying $4.9 million in 2007. In 2011, it's $9.1 million. It's more than doubled. So if we could take their 750 employees with our 550, amalgamate them together, bring them together under a common ownership clause, we could reduce the health insurance rates. Also, one of the things that hasn't been done is the skyrocketing fuel costs. Indianapolis Star just recently, if you buy a star here, it's costing not 75 cents like in Indianapolis, it costs a dollar here. And it's because of the 25 cents for the fuel cost. So we could go back to all of our fees and increase them depending on the severity, but to pay for the fuel cost to increase. So that's a good way to solve these problems. Thank you.
Mr. Carson.
I believe that we can always mainstream the budget. That's through honesty and integrity and the concern for how we spend our money, very carefully investigating every avenue to see what we can cut and what we can't cut. It's not about cuts. It's about trying to keep everything in a balance, in a check and balance system. We know as, some things you can help, some things you can't help. But yet again, the things that you can help, that we just need to make sure that it's only up and up, and that individuals will, the public can't see it, and that with the job increases, that some of the proposals that I'm laying out there, that we could have a better opportunity to maintain a good budget and get back into a positive for the community.
Mr. McKim.
Yes, thank you. There has been a lot of misinformation about the deficit. Some of my fellow candidates, I think, need to update their speeches based on the updated revenue information that we have from the state. In 2010, first of all, we ran a surplus, not a deficit. In 2011, with the corrected revenue numbers, we're about a quarter of a million in deficit. For 2012, which is more important, because we can do something about it, on paper, we're running a $2.9 million deficit. But $634,000 of that is one-time reassessment expenditures for which the revenue was collected in a previous period. That plus the $1.4 million in additional revenues that the state discovered that they actually owed us, leaves us with less than a $1 million deficit. And that's if only if departments spend every penny, which they don't. Over the last three years, departments have returned $1 million in 2011, $1.7 in 2010, and $2.4 million in 2009. And we've taken steps to ensure that we keep those returns going. We've started a hiring review process, which I initiated. Thank you.
Mr. Henninger.
Well, Jeff, I'm going to have to update my speech. But I think that I'm still basically correct now. We have to balance our income and our outcome. And the only one way we can do that over the long term is by either reducing wages or by reducing personnel, because 75% of our expenses is from personnel. So we have to have people on the council that has the courage enough to do what they have to do. You know, the trouble with politicians is that they always want everybody to love them. You can't always be well-loved. You know, Scott? If everybody loves me, I'm getting to worry. I'm doing something wrong. Anyway, Jeff has some very good points, and I'm glad he's going to be on our next council to give me some guidance. But I still think we need to cut personnel significantly in the next four years.
Ms. Thomas.
Well, any budget is a reflection of your values. You do this at home with your own budget, and we do this in county government. We have to identify priorities and the money that we do spend. And clearly, I don't support reducing wages. We need to reorganize county government to reduce our spending in order to balance the budget. Our revenues can only increase so much with increases in fees. I don't support a matrix or reorganization plan that was introduced earlier this year. And I think what we need to do is focus on our best asset, which is our department heads and staff. They know best how they can reorganize to provide customer service and to ensure that they're meeting their statutory requirements. There are some areas where departments could staff, share staff effectively, things like customer service, office administration, payroll, and financial management are some examples. But with the recent bit of reprieve with the adjusted county option income tax that we just learned about, our process can now be more thoughtful and deliberative, and I appreciate the fact that we can do that. Thank you.
Right. This will be our last question before making a segue into candidate statements. What's your approach to collaboration? How can you collaborate effectively with commissioners, auditor, and other elected officials? How would you view that playing out during your next term?
Thank you very much. When I play cards, I know I wouldn't be a very good When I play cards, I know I wouldn't be a very good card player because I, mine are all face up. That's the problem with me. Everything I do is face up. The difference between me and Mr. McKim, if you want to discuss, this is a good question to see how we're different. The matrix that was proposed by him and Vic Kelson, not one department had was included on how they were going to do all the changes in government. I wouldn't have done it that way. I would have included, first of all, Judy Sharp. She's been 25 years plus, one of our loyal employees. Forget about what party she is, she does a great job. She wasn't even included in the discussion, and I think she felt upset once it hit the paper, you know? And that's the big difference. I think you gotta open up the cards, face up, all these people have to be included, and let's have an open discussion. And that way, people don't feel insulted, actually. And I hope, if I'm elected, that's exactly what I'll do, is make sure that we have real transparency. Thank you.
Mr. Carson.
I believe in honesty, integrity, and being persistent. And I believe that I can work with any organization, any group, any board of directors, any type of organized group. I feel that we can work together and come together and reason on issues that are hard for individuals to come together on. But I think that when we put our heads together, and that we can work with, I like to work with the auditor, the treasurer, the county commissioners, the state representatives, all individuals for the best concern, not only the residents of Monroe County, but of the state. I feel also that we don't need to be pointing fingers and blaming one another, but I believe that we just need to work together. And I think that's the issue now, that why we're having these debates, because there's individuals who want to change. And I believe that I have a desire to be that change in Monroe County, and to work with the various groups to be the best person I can be for those individuals as a servant leader. And I think that we all are servant leaders to these individuals. So we just need to work for the community in being better.
Mr. McKim.
Yes, I think I'll just give an example directly, actually, from last night. I've just spent the better part of the last two days dealing with the aftermath of an error in the auditor's office that is going to wind up costing this county almost a million dollars, spread across all the taxing units. This will come and hit the paper tomorrow, probably. But among other things, last night, I called a meeting, asked the treasurer, representatives from the treasurer, from the auditor's office, and the assessor's office to attend, just so we could discuss the situation, make sure that we understood the scope of it, so we could communicate openly with the other taxing units who are going to be impacted, and so that we could discuss possible ways forward. And so, I brought them together. We all agreed, we weren't going to talk about recriminations, or pointing fingers, or anything like that. We were just going to talk about solutions. And we were going to talk about, like I said, providing good, open information to the media and to the other taxing units. And that worked out very well. Thank you.
Mr. Henninger.
Well, I certainly agree with what Mr. Carson said. I think that it's a good human relationship without going into any situation with antipathy or with desire to be a one-up person, but to get along and to work forward and try to solve problems. And you do that by keeping an open mind and an open heart, and working it hard and knowing that it will. None of us are perfect, but that we can solve problems if we will work together.
Ms. Thomas.
Definitely teamwork always accomplishes much more than individuals working with or against each other. I've worked with a lot of departments on the Fleet Finance Committee, Plan Commission, Metropolitan Planning Organization, so other elected officials outside of this county jurisdiction as well. And I worked with commissioners to create the Environmental Equality and Sustainability Commission, and the Women's Commission, because they, as a legislative body, are the only ones who can create such commissions. I also believe we need to collaborate with staff, department heads, to reorganize county government. That's a future goal that I have. And collaboration also includes working with the community. I do the residents breakfast with Dorothy Granger, and my community activism, I think, is reflective of my willingness to collaborate with the community by being part of the community. Collaboration, to me, also includes transparency. If I go from Jeff's example, I would rather have had the entire council have a meeting about it. That's part of, for me, part of collaboration, is making sure everybody has the information. Thank you.
Ms. Travis.
Well, collaboration is a key ingredient of the pillars of my platform, which are transparency and fairness in government. I believe I was recruited to run for office this time around, and I was recruited to run in 2004 because people who know me recognize that I'm a really good collaborator. When I served as a county council president in 2006, I really beefed up our public processes. In anticipation of our annual budget sessions, I held no less than, I believe, 10 work sessions. And they ranged in topics from economic development to how the auditor devised a 16-line statement. It was the first session of its kind to be held, and it was very appreciated from both parties. I've worked with labor representatives on sheriffs, deputies, salary issues, always bringing in people from across all different areas within county government and external to county government to bring in expertise.
All right, we'll have our concluding two-minute statements from the candidates, and we'll go in the opposite direction that we've gone before, and we'll start with Scott Wells.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments from everybody, and I'm glad we've had a good discussion. I like to think I'm like a dog. Some people say I am a dog. Dogs don't see color, and that's the way you should be. You look at, you don't see color, you don't, black, white, green, or red, you name the color, dogs don't see color. They don't discriminate. They don't discriminate. I'm a progressive Democrat. It's all about the content of your character that should make a difference as to who you really are. The problem why I'm running is, of course, the budget. This last year, let's just look at this last year, right here. The state said we're gonna get $4 million, because they were holding that for 16 months from the beginning of 2011 up to the first four months of this year. $4 million, we get 40% of that, that's $1.4 million, okay? Of that, we have a $2.5 million deficit. So right now, we're $900,000 short this year. And then I can go back and go through the other years, I don't have time to discuss them, but you get the idea. My mission, and your mission, is to elect Democrats. Elect real Democrats. Elect progressive Democrats. Elect real progressive Democrats. And I feel that I am a real progressive Democrat. I have a proven record of serving the people as a servant, I've been a teacher, and I just hope that you'll give me the opportunity to come back and return to the county council, because my mission statement is fiscal sustainability through transparency, and we need to get this budget solved, and the sooner we do it, the better, so we can help people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Now, candidate Sophia Travis.
Recently, I was asked, why, why do you want to run for county council? And the truth, the simple truth is, I feel in my element. I was recruited to run. I was quite surprised when I was approached to run. But when I gave it a test run at an opportunity to speak to a group of women with the Democratic Women's Caucus, I immediately simply felt in my element again. And the, as I've said, the pillars of my public service, whether it's with county government, or whether it's with my appointments to various boards, I serve on various boards for not-for-profits, remain transparency and fairness. And I think that people desire to have someone who is compassionate and effective. And I have a proven record for being compassionate and effective. I'm able to be a leader, but I'm also a very good team member. I think my creative side also is a huge asset on the county council. I can appreciate when I see good creative ideas, and it's a tremendous, wonderful experience to serve as a public servant on the county council. It's a leadership opportunity. It helps you keep your pulse on everything that's going on, or keep, what the pulse is, with everything going on in our community, which is a beautiful place. I would love to serve again. My name is Sophia Travis. I'm running for county council at large, representing fairness and transparency in government. My website is www.sophia-travisforcouncil.com, and I would appreciate your vote come May 8th, or when you're early voting.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. Now, Julie Thomas.
First, I want to say that it has been an absolute honor to serve Monroe County residents for the last three and a half years or so as a member of the county council. It has been a really incredible experience for me, and I agree with Sophia. It's really something that changes you in a very positive way. But I, we do face many challenges in terms of trying to forge a balanced budget, and I believe what we need now on the council is our candidates who have proven leadership and collaboration experience. And that's what I bring to the table. I moved here about 19 years ago to attend IU. I love this place, and I never left, and I think that happens to a lot of people. Married and live, obviously, in the county on, in the, near east side. And educator, small business owner, I wear a lot of hats, which I kind of like, keeps life very interesting, which is good. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Democratic Women's Caucus and Democracy for Monroe County. And in my second term, I will endeavor to protect the environment, encourage civic engagement, and ensure that we have a responsible budget. I'm Julie Thomas, Democratic candidate for Monroe County Council. As a member of council, and in my service to the community, I've demonstrated my commitment to Monroe County. Please visit my campaign website, julithomas.us, and I'd appreciate your vote on the eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Now, candidate Warren Henninger.
And I also would appreciate your vote. Back in the 1830s, not the 1930s when I was a little kid, but the 1830s, minor industry was for European writers to come to the United States and to write a book on it. And most of them were critical, because that's what the people in Europe wanted to know. They wanted to know that it would never work. And two remarks, and of course, De Tocqueville is the most famous one. These are two remarks by people other than De Tocqueville, or my favorite, Francis Trollope. One said, "Well, it's an intriguing idea. It's an interesting idea, but it'll never work because the people will never tax themselves to the extent necessary." And the other criticism was, "Well, it's a good idea, it's a good idea, it's interesting, but it'll never work, but it'll only work until the people discover that they have the keys to the treasurer." And those are two comments and criticisms that stayed with me, and I think is very, very true. We need to step up to the plate and be willing to be taxed necessary, to the extent necessary to get the job done. One of the things that, of course, on a local level, I've voted for taxes every chance I've got, because I think it's good for our democratic soul. And we're still under taxed by any standard, protected by world standard. But I want to leave, and I want your help in this. We need, we are in a real problem so far as our highway financing is concerned. Our revenues are going down, and our needs are going up. So what we need is for us all to do what we can to get the state legislature to raise the gas tax. If we raise the gas tax just 10 cents, just 10 cents, it would solve our problem, it would do worlds of good, it would fix our highway. And with the way that the price of gasoline today, and the way it goes up and down, nobody would know it. All we need to have is some public servants, elected officials, that has the guts to say, "We need an increase in our gas tax."
Thank you, Mr. Henninger. Now, candidate Jeff McKim.
Thank you very much to the Monroe County Democratic Party for sponsoring this evening's candidate forum. Hopefully, you were able to see enough about each of these Democratic candidates to see that we're all ultimately fighting on the same team. I'd be honored to have any of these fellow Democrats as my representative, and it has also been an honor to serve with Warren Henninger and Julie Thomas on the council for the last three and a half years. But I also hope you've had the opportunity here to draw some contrasts. I have a demonstrated record of leadership and results. I'm willing to make proposals, like the one for reorganization of county government, that may not be perfect or popular, but are necessary to move the conversation forward. I've taken the initiative to raise taxes and fees when I thought it was in the best interest of Monroe County, and the residents of Monroe County. And I've been willing to go head-to-head with other elected officials when necessary, but also to cooperate and collaborate to create better outcomes for all. Despite some recent good news on revenue, local government will continue to face pressures to be smaller. If we don't take action ourselves to make sure that we have a sustainable budget, our opponents will. And their priorities will not match the values of Monroe County. Our opponents will attempt to balance the budget on the backs of our hard-working county and poorly compensated county employees. And our opponents will not support budgetary priorities that protect the distinctiveness of our unique community. My name is Jeff McKim, and I ask for your vote in the Democratic primary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. Now, candidate Jeff Carson.
Once again, honesty, integrity, and being persistent and having morals. I would like to be, as elected, to be working on jobs for the community of Monroe County, working with the local government to make it more efficient, and also to have more of the county participants, more of the residents, be more participative within the programs here in Monroe County. I consider myself an agent of change. I have the ability to have an open mind, being unbiased, and a fair decision-making. It is important to, in this community, and in these economic times. Fiscal or environmental reforms are necessary as our country and our county faces challenges and change. My name is Jeff Carson. I would like your vote on May 8th. My website is www.electjeffcarson.com. I look forward to working with any of these other council members who are seeking election, and looking forward to working more within the community, and working more with the Democratic Party here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening, and thank you very much for you guys coming out and supporting us.
Thank you, Mr. Carson.
I'd like to thank all of our county council at-large candidates for participating this evening in our discussion. I also want to thank all of the members of the audience that came out, and those who offered questions, and also extend my thanks to my colleagues within the Democratic Party Organization for assisting to put together this evening. And lastly, I want to inform everyone that may be viewing or listening at home that voting, Election Day is May 8th, but early voting is happening right now, and anyone who is registered to vote can vote now all the way through Election Day. And with that being said, thanks again to all of our candidates, our audience members, and everyone, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Go Jeff.